I'm going to call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Roll call, please. Whoops. Hold on. Do we have a closed session report?
Mr. Mayor, there's nothing to report. Thank you.
Let's see here. Randy Rudy, would you like to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Here.
Councilmember Littler?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Mayor Protam Judge?
Here.
Mayor Thomas?
Here.
Are there any items for agenda review? Seeing none. I moved that... Wow, what is it?
He moves that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read entitled only and all further reading be waived.
Second. If any member of the City Council may have conflict of interest... What? Oh, I'm sorry. Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. If any member of the City Council may have any conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should declare so at this time. And seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the first item on the agenda is Item 1D1, Presentation of a Proclamation Proclaiming December 10, 2023 as Human Rights Day. And Assistant City Manager Samantha Argabright is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. This evening, we have representatives from Seroptimus Simi Valley in attendance to accept the proclamation. And as I call your name, please come forward. Brooke Grayson, President; Amy Cornet, immediate past President and Director of Public Awareness; Gina Corantello, Director of Programs; Cheryl Tesprati, Director of Seroptimus International Awareness. And now I will read the proclamation. Whereas on December 10, 1948, in Paris, France, the United Nations General Assembly proclaimed the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, UDHR, which set out for the first time fundamental human rights. And whereas the UDHR was one of the most groundbreaking global pledges and enshrined the inalienable rights that everyone is entitled to as a human being and is a blueprint for international, national, and local laws and policies. And whereas whenever humanities rights are abandoned collectively, we are at greater risk. And the UDHR calls upon everyone to stand up for human rights. And whereas Seroptimus International is a global volunteer organization, working to improve the lives of women and girls through programs leading to social and economic empowerment. And whereas Seroptimus International operates on four core values: gender equality, empowerment, education, diversity, and fellowship, all with the goal to improve the lives of women and girls across the world, supporting the core ambition of the UDHR to infuse society with equality, fundamental freedoms, and justice. Now therefore, December 10, 2023, is hereby proclaimed Human Rights Day in the city of Simi Valley to increase knowledge of the universality and indivisibility of human rights and to encourage the community to take action to protect these rights for all. Presented this fourth day of December, 2023.
Well, once again, this is why it's one of my favorite organizations, because you guys take the lead in so many important things in this community. Anyways, congratulations. Who would like to speak?
I will speak. Thank you for being here. Thank you so much. Thank you to the council. Human rights are our moral principles or norms that describe certain standards of human behavior and are regularly protected as legal rights in municipal and international law. Everyone born in this world has human rights that must be protected by that law. According to the United Nations, we have 30 basic human rights that are recognized around the world. So what are the human rights? The 30 rights according to Universal Declaration of Human Rights by United Nations, you can look them up and Google them. But basic human rights recognized around the world declared by United Nations through the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. These declarations held by United Nations General Assembly at the Palais des Chalades, if you speak French, in Paris, France, on December 10, 1948. Of the then 58 members of the United Nations, 48 voted in favor, none against, eight abstained, and two did not vote. The declaration consists of 30 articles affirming an individual's rights. Those 30 articles currently known as 30 Universal Declaration of Human Rights, or 30 basic human rights, including rights to life, rights to education, rights to organize, and rights to be treated fairly, among other things. The 30 universal rights also cover freedom of opinion, expression, thought, and religion. That's why we're up here today, to raise awareness to our own freedom of rights and to be here. So thank you for coming. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 1D2, Presentation of an Honorary Resolution Celebrating the 20th Anniversary of the Volunteer Disaster Service Workers Program. And Emergency Services Coordinator Rachel Myers is here to present this item. And accepting the honorary resolution are disaster service workers. If you can please come forward when I call you in... Oh, there they are. Come. Bob Moss, Ed Baker, David Fisher, Darrell Clark, Phil Ankrum, Jorge Curiel, Rudy Mazzella, Ray Perkins, Nick DeNicholas, Rob Maurer, Kirk Heineman, and Melissa Heineman.
Whereas the Volunteer Disaster Service Worker Program was established in 2003 to supplement professional responders, such as police officers, firefighters, and medical providers, with trained and dedicated volunteers during large incidents and disasters. And whereas the mission of the program is to train highly motivated community members in preparedness, response, and recovery activities, so they can utilize these skills to minimize the loss of life and damage to property following disasters. And whereas volunteer disaster service workers attend regular meetings, participate in high-quality disaster response training and exercises, share a common set of core competencies, and dedicate their time to develop and maintain their response skills. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Simi Valley hereby commends the Volunteer Disaster Service Worker Program on the occasion of its 20th anniversary and wishes to acknowledge the tremendous service the highly motivated and capable members provide and the vital role the program plays in the city's emergency organization. Presented this fourth day of December, 2023.
Well, I would personally like to thank you guys for the dedication to serve this community. And I know it's been a lot of time in preparing and training to be available for this. So it's really appreciated. It means a lot. Thank you very much for your service.
Additionally, we'd like to mention we-
I'd just like to thank you, Mayor, and the City Council for honoring DSW and encourage everyone to volunteer their time in some way. We can use more people, but there are a lot of other things in the city that you can volunteer for. So step up and participate. You'll be rewarded for it.
Thank you, Darrell. And Bob has a 20th anniversary patch that we've created for the team to commemorate the occasion, and we'd like to gift one to all the City Council members.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 2, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports. Mr. Mayor, we have no speakers for this item this evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3A1, Appointment of Mayor Protam. Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council, each year in December, the City Council considers the appointment of Mayor Protam and appoints a City Council member other than the mayor to serve as Mayor Protam, as well as Vice Chair of the District Authority and President Protam of the Library Board of Trustees. It is recommended that the City Council, Board of Directors, Board of Trustees, consider the appointment to Mayor Protam, Vice Chair, and President Protam positions. This concludes staff's presentation.
Would you like a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Or discussion?
I'm not really, you know, familiar with the process.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, I would like to appoint Rocky Rhodes as Mayor Protam, Vice Chair, President Protam.
Second.
I would just like to speak to it if I could, and I'm in concurrence, if that's all right, Mayor, before we actually have the motion. Just for those... Just for discussion's sake. The reality is that Mayor Protam, Mike Judge, has served very well this year. DeeDee has... Councilmember Kavanaugh has served in the past well. I have had the honor of being in that position. It is really a wonderful position to basically step in if the mayor's not available and to be there behind scenes. And I think any one of us have done and would do a very good job. I think it is appropriate certainly to allow Councilmember Rocky Rhodes to have that opportunity as we have in the past. And so just wanted to speak, share that, and say that I certainly am in favor of the motion as well.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 4, Public Statements. During this Agenda Item 4, the City Council will hear public statements from the first-hand persons who have submitted speaker cards. After the first hand has spoken, subsequent persons who submitted speaker cards will speak during Agenda Item Number 6, which is a continuation of Agenda Item Number 4. Agenda Items 4 and 6 are the times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which the card was submitted to speak for this public statement's Item 4 for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any comments, we can begin public statements.
Please proceed.
Thank you. John Lapper?
Mayor Thomas and City Council, I really hate to use my three-minute public statement to preach to our City Council, but sadly, it remains necessary. Many of my adversaries in town and a couple on the City Council seem to think I am here for the attention or some other self-serving purpose. Believe me, I would much rather be watching Monday Night Football. I advocate for eucalyptus trees, traffic control signals, major street paving, more motorcycle traffic officers, against backyard residential cargo containers, four BMX tracks, four police body cams, city budget issues, attended a 10-week Simi Valley PD Citizens Academy, volunteered fundraisers, and other issues only because I care about our city. Pathetically, some on the council can't separate my politics from my genuine efforts to inform our community and make it a safer, better place to live. I proudly raised my three children in Simi Valley. When I am relegated by our City Councils to just three minutes of speech and emails, and in return, I only get snide remarks from the dais, from some council members, and other than Councilwoman Littler, get no responses or answers to my civil inquiries, I am troubled. I do not have the luxury of chatting at social gatherings with the council members. My own district councilman, Rocky Rhodes, now Mayor Protam, has ignored all my inquiries for a year. When he finally responded, I was told I didn't deserve his respect. He stated, "Your questions will be answered when I earn his respect." My public statements and emails are civil and deserve answers, as Rocky is my elected, paid representative. I do not demand respect, just answers to my concerns for Simi Valley. Not a tough concept. If Rocky's feathers get ruffled, that's on him. Rancho Simi Park and Rec Board meetings are on Zoom and allow input from those who can't attend meetings in person. Questions and comments that are submitted are printed out for all to see. Board members can actually ask speakers for clarification on their comments. At our City Council, if a council member chooses to ignore a speaker or the public statements or emails, we have no chance of engagement. It is time for Zoom meetings with questions, public statements submitted to be printed or read, and a concerted effort for our council to be more transparent in disclosing the business of our city, especially concerning lawsuit updates or results. A Thursday City Council agenda four days ahead of the meeting is hardly sufficient time for this council or public to evaluate the many staff reports and then get only three minutes of a statement. In 2024, let's see some town halls, as Mike Judges claim that they conflict with the Brown Act can't be true. I thank our City Council and city staff for all they do, and I sincerely wish you all a safe, happy holidays. Thank you. John Lapper, Simi Valley.
Chris Herwin?
Good evening. Want to talk to you about something I find very important near my neighborhood. I think all of you know where Sycamore Plaza is, where Home Goods is, Red's Barbecue, Cronies. So while driving down Racine Avenue going towards Sycamore Avenue, I noticed that there are two sets of trees. One set is on the Parkway. And it's a very long street, so there's probably 20 trees on the Parkway. Those didn't look too bad. Now, if you look at the sidewalk and you look closer to the wall, that's in back of Sycamore Plaza, there's a hill and it's all green. I think most people here, if you live in Simi, you know that street. Well, as I'm driving down the street, I notice there is a couple of trees, instead of growing straight, they're growing this way, like this. So that means the branches are like 10 feet long, hanging way over the sidewalk, almost hanging completely over Racine, a number of branches. Well, and then I noticed there is ladies with their strollers or little children walking with them underneath these trees and bicyclists, just people, you know, walking, not realizing all these huge trees that have not been trimmed for a long time. So I went to a couple of the places and I said, you know, who are the owners of Sycamore Plaza? Well, there's two owners. I said, oh, well, can you tell me the owner's name? They didn't know, and they own the restaurant. So I called code enforcement first, then I called Public Works, and neither of the two people that answered the phone would help me. They said I had to call the owners of Sycamore Plaza. You know, and I thought, wait a minute, you're supposed to be here for us. I don't know how to do your job. So they wouldn't help me. And so I went to the city and I filed a complaint with one of the ladies there. She took my paperwork. And it was about a month later. So one owner that owns the side where Red's Barbecue is and Home Goods, finally, it took three weeks, they finally got tree trimmers, but they would only do their section. They wouldn't get together with the one who owns the other end, kind of like, why wouldn't you do that, you know? If this is your plaza here and you want people to come, you want everybody to be safe driving on Racine, why wouldn't you do that? So I had to go back to the city again and fill out another complaint for the owner who owns the other side. So that's why I'm here, is to talk to you. If you could please tell them that they need to take care of that street with all those trees. What do you think?
Your time's up.
You know our wind here.
Yeah, your time's up. I'm sorry.
Do you think that's a good idea?
We can't comment yet. We will at the end of public comment.
All right.
Eduardo Galileo-Rivas?
Good afternoon, Ms. Lester. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Fred Thomas. Mr. Judge, good afternoon. And good afternoon to Mr. Rhodes, even though he's not doing his job properly. his job properly. I haven't been showing up to any of the meetings for the reason, you guys all know, that I was here to investigate a big business, big business, multi-billionaires with a B, in Simi Valley. Gabler is the city manager. He's supposed to be on top of all the businesses and all the wrongdoing in Simi Valley. He never helped me with Mr. Sinisero's, now you've got a new attorney, the city attorney, which is, he cannot represent you guys at the Supreme Court or Superior Court. But, what I'm trying to tell, the reason I mentioned Mr. Ford, because he's no part of this, but Mr. Gabler is, he had two years to defend me, and he never did. Now, but the main thing is that Mr. Gabler, with the Detective Bureau, are accusing me that I'm the one that is running Dr. Sheed has me alive, my disability that I'm controlling, Dr. Sheed's medical clinic. He's a psychiatrist, he's a philosopher, that's how much school he has, all he, all he needs to do is operations. But Mr. Gabler, that's why this case is being, they're abusing me, the city now, and they also abuse me at the Superior Court. He knew about it. I didn't, haven't shown up for any of the meetings. Again, I want to repeat myself for the reason that the Bureau, Mr. Gonzalez, Tejada, his partner, I have left messages to Mrs. Lucas or Luca, DeLuca. But I've been accused that I'm running a doctor who has 53 years of experience to keep people alive and prescribe medicine. We all have to open our eyes. Mr. Thomas, I want to thank you for looking at me. But this corruption, you guys control it. Mr. Judge, I have a high respect for Council Judge for the reason, he's an LAPD. I was attacked with a deadly weapon, working for the government, because I did not marry out of my culture. And I was put in jail because I did not marry out of my culture. So you guys don't know, and now you're permitting Gonzalez, Tejada, and his partner accusing me that I run Dr. Sheed's office. Dr. She wrote them, all of you guys, a letter, which I want to request and give it to Mrs. Lister. I want to give her a copy, what he wrote against Mr. Gonzalez, who's a detective. I don't know how old he is, I'm old. I've been to two wars against communism, and I'm experiencing communism in the city of Simi Valley, which I told you before, Mr. Thomas, I've been coming here, I was born in 1954, I've been, I've been coming here before Simi Valley was called Simi Valley, before it got incorporated with Intera County. And we have a lot of politicians that have been trying to remove the statue of Santa Barbara. How sad deep I am now, and I was never like this. But we need to investigate Ms. Gonzalez, Tejada, his partner.
I appreciate you coming for majority of a minute over time, and I, I just need to be fair to everybody else, okay?
Yeah, do something about it. You go, send me a letter, you said, or you going to give it to? Okay, thank you, I'll wait for it. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last speaker. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 4A, City Council Comments Regarding Public Statements.
Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just want to say the one, looks like she left, I don't remember her name, but we'll look into the trees on Racine. Thanks.
Councilmember Lister.
Thank you, and Mr. Crawford, I appreciate you staying. I think we are concerned for you, and I'm sorry that you did not receive my letter, but I will be sure to get it delivered to you again, and I'm sorry, which hopefully has some assistance. And I'll, I'll either email it to you or give it to you afterwards if you want to wait to the end, but appreciate your, your being here today. Mr. Lapper, you've talked about several things, I just wanted to comment about your desire for town halls and, and opportunity to have discussion. I, I, I'm hoping that one of my resolutions for next year is at least to have some, maybe a walk around the park, if someone wants to walk with me, we can chat, and, but anyway, I, I hope that, I hope that you find, that we find ways at all to be accessible, and I know that that is, that is our desire, so. And also, Ms. Herwin, thank you for, thank you for your diligence for our community to truly want to make it safer, and so I'm sure we will. And I was going to ask Mr. Gabler, those trees are certainly the responsibility of the owners, or they're not ours in any way, is that correct?
Correct, they're private property.
Okay.
Yep. We'll be, we'll reach out to the property.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have the same question about the trees, if we could actually do the reach out, and so thank you, and I think that that's a, a great thing to bring to public, the public square, if we have things that we are not being responsive to, bring them up. Thank you for your comments, sir, I, I'm empathetic to what you're going through, I couldn't follow everything that you were saying there, but, but, yes, and, yes, and, and so, but, but thank you for coming and bringing it to us again. It can't be a dialogue.
No dialogue here, no dialogue, no dialogue.
Yeah, it can't be a dialogue, I'm just saying thank you.
No comments from the audience, please.
And then, lastly, Mr. Lapper, thank you for spending your three minutes and missing Monday Night Football for us, it's greatly appreciated. Maybe next time you'll represent my comments to you correctly.
Okay, I'm just going to comment on one thing, the trees. We don't need to follow through on that, I will do that personally, because the owner's a friend of mine, and for the last few months, he's been dealing with a very ill wife who just passed away about a week and a half ago. The family's been dealing with that for well over a month, and I'm sure that's one of the reasons why they weren't able to respond, but I will make sure that they are aware of that and they take care of it, because he is a very responsive owner.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is public hearings. This is a time for testimony on public hearings on the consideration of matters as presented on this agenda, that the record show that due notice was given as required by law and an affidavit to this effect has already been provided, filed in the office of the city clerk. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the City Council and will be made part of the record, however, they will not be read by the city clerk this evening. Speakers will be called on in the order in which your car was submitted to speak for this public testimony item five for a period of no more than five minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Comments shall be limited to matters relevant to the item on the agenda and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to the item. The reports of the city staff related, relating to these matters shall be made part of the record of this meeting. If you challenge in court any of the City Council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time within which judicial review must be sought is governed by California Court of Civil Procedure Section 109 point, 1094.6. A continued public hearing to consider in City Initiated Municipal Code Amendment Z-S-2023-0006, to amend portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code, to modify standards for residential off-street parking, front yard landscaping, rear yard vehicle access gates and screening, a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and introduction of an ordinance. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance Number 1353, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley for City Initiated Municipal Code Amendments Z-S-2023-0006, to amend portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code, to modify standards for the residential off-street parking, front yard landscaping, rear yard vehicle access gates and screening, and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And Deputy Environmental Services Director Sean Gibson, Associate Planner Alex Klingman, and Principal Planner Claudia Pedrosso are here to present this item.
Before we begin, are there any conflicts or expedited communications to report? No, okay, thank you. Staff may begin with their report.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, members of the City Council. I'll turn it right over to Associate Planner Alex Klingman for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. On November 6th, the City Council held a public hearing to review municipal code text amendments for residential off-street parking and related provisions. During the meeting, the Council requested revisions to the proposed amendments in order to clarify the maximum number of vehicles allowed to be parked in the front yard, to define non-passenger vehicles, and to explore the feasibility of maintaining 50% front yard landscaping. Staff has prepared those changes for discussion this evening. To recap, the proposed amendment would allow a paved parking area up to 10 feet wide opposite the main driveway when a minimum of 30% front yard landscaping is maintained, and when the parking area originates from a driveway approach or accessway approved by Public Works. In certain cases, homeowners may record a deed restriction on their property to indemnify the city from any damages to the curb if a new approach is not feasible. Since the last meeting, the requirement for a minimum nine-foot side yard setback has been removed. This would allow vehicles to be parked in front of a portion of the home with or without access to the side yard, as shown in the images here. For the purpose of this amendment, and at the request of the City Council, a recreational vehicle will be defined by Section 18010 of the California Health and Safety Code and Simi Valley Municipal Code Section 9-80.020. These definitions encompass motorhomes, travel trailers, campers, converted trucks and buses, and boats and boat trailers. Currently, more than one recreational vehicle is allowed to be parked in the front yard and would continue to be allowed on lots without the additional parking strip. This image shows an example of what is currently allowed. At the request of City Council, the amendment has been updated to clarify that a maximum of one recreational vehicle is allowed to be parked within the front yard when opposite side parking is requested. This image shows an example of what would not be allowed due to the two recreational vehicles parked in the front yard. It is important to note that this new rule is only applicable to properties with opposite side parking, it would, it would not be applicable citywide. The proposed code amendment requires that at least 30% of landscaping be maintained when the additional 10-foot parking strip is requested. In all other situations, required landscaping would remain at 50%. This image shows an example of what reduced landscaping could look like with the new paved area. It is important to note that although landscaping can be reduced to 30% with this update, it does not automatically mean that the remaining 70% of the front yard can be utilized for parking. Passenger and recreational vehicles would still only be permitted to park on approved locations and must be paved in compliance with the code. At the last meeting, there was discussion about allowable hardscape in the front yard. To clarify, of the 50% required landscaping, no more than one-half may consist of decorative features such as boulders, river and lava rock, fountains and ponds. The use of 100% hardscape, as shown in the image above, would not be permitted because there are no live plants. At the November 6th meeting, staff was asked to evaluate the possibility of maintaining 50% landscaping with the new parking area. Because the city currently permits additional paving allowances such as the driveway, pedestrian walkway, and 10-foot parking strip next to the driveway, front yard landscaping is often already reduced below 50%, as you can see in the column on the left. This table shows the effective front yard landscaping percentage on lots with different widths, taking into account the current paving allowances with the proposed parking area applied on the right. And while a typical lot could maintain approximately 32% landscaping, the narrower lots in the city would essentially have no landscaping. Staff has concluded that maintaining 50% landscaping on all lots would not be feasible with this amendment. Based on staff's survey of various residential zones in the county, it was found that while off-street parking is generally allowed in addition to the standard driveway, a number of cities have a minimum front yard landscape coverage requirement of 50%. The following alternatives are available to the City Council tonight. Introduce Ordinance Number 1353, approving the proposed parking changes, take no action, or provide an alternative direction. This concludes our presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes, thank you for the report, and thank you for taking our requests and, and working with them and messaging them to try and bring us back something that, that fits with what we're trying to do. Can you go into just a little more detail about removing the nine-foot setback and, and what that, what was the thought process in getting there and how that helps this, this amendment?
So, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes, the, the initial nine-foot setback request is not on this particular slide, if you can go back to the diagram, Alex. The initial direction was a yellow area would only be provided if you could access that side yard on the opposite side of the main garage to, in order to allow for the front yard parking on that opposite side. After further discussion, taking that nine-foot out of tonight's ordinance would resolve some other concerns in the community where, going back to the other photo, where some residents may not have nine feet on that opposite side, but they need additional room to park that recreational vehicle, which is one category of the many complaints that we have on enforcement currently, so to take that out, for example, in the lower left-hand photo, this would be allowed with tonight's ordinance.
Whereas it's out of compliance right now.
It's currently out of compliance, yes.
And so, there's, it's inevitable that we end up parking in front of part of the house in that, in this scenario, when we remove the nine-foot.
Right, this would, this would potentially bring more properties into compliance if you only, if you required a nine-foot side setback, it only allow the people who could access their side yard with a vehicle, and many houses like this would not comply, so we're looking at bringing more into potential compliance.
Thank you. I have no other question.
Councilmember Lister.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify some of the presentation that was given. Am I right in understanding that landscaping remains at 50% unless someone asks for that other driveway, on the, on the opposite, opposite driveway side? Otherwise, it will be at 50%. So, is it, and I'm so sorry, I can't see. One of these days, I, I, we've had this discussion. Am I correct in understanding that that is, that, that basically, they can only go below 50% if they ask for that pavement? Is that correct? And then, secondly, if they ask for that pavement, but they are on a narrow lot, 45 feet, etc., they can't have it anyway because it would likely take them below 30%.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Is that correct? So we're So, we're only now offering this other side parking to, and I realize this is a general statement, if your width is at least 65 feet or more, probably. Is that likely, the likely scenario of this regulation?
Typical lot widths range from 50 to 60, 50 maybe to 75 feet in width. Based on the calculation that we have done, those lots could potentially maintain the 32% landscaping. Anything narrower than that would most likely not be able to.
And so, they would not get to have that opposite parking? Okay. In the report, page three, it talks, well, Section 7E, it specifically talks about only one RV may be parked on approved front yard parking. I want to be very clear, that restriction only applies if they have, if they're requesting that additional parking on the other side.
That's correct.
So, right now, the way the regulation reads, if they can fit it on their garage side, they can have multiple RV units?
Currently, yes.
Okay, if they make this request and they're reapproved, then they're required to get rid of those other ones and just only put one on the other side? Or is that, whether or not they park, whichever side they choose to, but they only get one at that point?
That is correct.
And how is that enforced?
It'd be enforced on a complaint basis. So, if we get a complaint of multiple recreational vehicles or boats in a front yard that has the additional drive on the opposite side of the garage, then we would enforce against that.
Got it, but otherwise, if they, just a complaint that they have multiple units, if they don't have that additional side, they're not out of compliance? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Actually, just a question. Maybe because of the way you started your report, and I was just interested. You said this is to deal with the maximum number that can be parked. That was one of the statements you said. Is there a maximum number of vehicles currently that can be parked?
There's no maximum amount of vehicles. It's the amount of pavement which we currently regulate.
Got it.
Depending on how many vehicles you could fit on that pavement, vehicles come in various sizes, shapes, and lengths. So, the quantity of vehicles on the allowed pavement areas is what we don't regulate. We regulate the pavement locations.
Got it, okay. And to your knowledge, is there any other city, and I realize that we are pretty generous in allowing RVs right now in the front yard?
Correct.
How many right now, how many other cities in Ventura County allow? I'm not talking about the amount of landscaping, but right now, do we know how many other, or what other cities allow for RVs in the front yard? And I'm sorry, I should have asked this question earlier, but I just, curiosity.
No, I currently don't have that information.
Okay, because I'm told that we're a little unusual in that we allow this. Is that, Sean, is that, to your knowledge?
Yeah, that's what I've heard, and our Director, Mr. Perez, has pointed that out several times. He's familiar with some of those other locations. Having it in the front yard is, I would say, an anomaly.
Is it anomaly already?
In the county.
Got it.
Not going beyond county, cities.
Sure. Okay, fair enough. Okay, thank you. For now, those are my questions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In this particular image here, all the way on the left-hand side, so normally, aren't driveways paved directly through to the garage doors only? And then, there's usually some possibility of landscaping between the next property and the driveway? That's usually what we see. Okay, that's what I see around town, okay. So, my question would be is, in this particular case, if the trailer on the left, if that was still landscaped instead of cement, because it's been added, it's not part of the actual driveway. So, if that was landscaped, they parked in their driveway, and then we allowed the excess or the extra parking on the opposite side, wouldn't they still be able to maintain 50% or at least 48% of landscaping? Well, in the mid-lot size, so typical, the typical lot with the 65-foot. So, I'm just trying to understand how we calculated. Because I know the majority of time, we're looking at the driveway as already expanded with cement, and not everybody has that. So, I didn't know if we were taking that into consideration, that it's always cement on that other side? Or if we're giving that nine-to-10-foot space possibly landscaped?
Right, it's not always 10 feet wide or whatever. But yeah, some people qualify for the 50% rule because they don't have that area, whether it's on a slope or they just don't want it there. There's various ways to hit 50%. And the pitfall of that is, is that it could be come back and paved later, then you fall under the 50% rule. So, it's a moment in time when that occurs.
Good point. Thank you, Sean. Okay. The other question I had, I've had people comment to me that, and I don't know, city manager or stratus, you guys might know. So, we have a lot of homes on very busy streets, for example, Royal, that have completely cemented their entire yards because they have no street parking. Are there exceptions for those properties to do that?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, somebody randomly said, oh yeah, they can do that because it's random. And I didn't think so. So, they're under the same considerations as every other when it comes to parking? Okay.
Correct.
That's what I thought. Thank you. I drive Royal a lot, and you kind of notice it there the most. That's it for right now on my questions. Thank you.
So, back to that slide you were just at a minute ago, kind of touches, you almost touched on the question I had, that one. All right, it was my understanding that the only opportunity for you to have the alternate drive was if you did not have room on the garage side for a drive. If you do have it, you're still allowed to apply for the alternate one as well?
So, that came up for discussion in prior, one of the prior City Council meetings is one of the options, and the direction was to not include that in the direction. So, there is no either-or situation under current, as written.
But in the new one, it restricts that you can only have one now, so, one RV. So, that, the one that was there on the left in that parking, extended parking to the lot line, one of those will now have to go.
Well, but my point was, if you have room to add the additional paved area on the side of the garage, that you should not be allowed to add an additional one on the other side. I thought that was, the whole point of adding that alternate one on the other side is that some of the houses didn't have room on the garage side. I thought that was the whole point and how this all started in the first place. I don't know. Well, I'm not a fan of the 70%. I'm not, you know, I feel like anything that we allow is something we can never take away. So, I'm kind of reluctant to go too far. Yeah, all right. So, any other questions at this time? Okay. At this time, I would like to open the hearing for anyone in the City Council chambers wishing to be heard on this matter.
The first speaker, Barbara Williamson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Barbara Williamson. I have lived here for 53 years. We all remember the mall. How many years has it been, Brian? 2000 was it built, or we talked about it? And there was a big issue when we talked to the mall. There was two parts of it. Some of you may remember, some of you may not because you weren't on the council. But we had the mall section, and we had the ancillary section. Right now, we have Best Buy there, and we have the Market Broiler, and we have Big Lots. I'll come back to that in a minute. There was a big controversy over the ancillary part of the mall. Moving forward today, there is some question about property rights. Well, people, I believe in property rights. However, I also believe in the property rights of the people who live next door to what you're proposing. Your decision will aesthetically affect our community for Simi Valley for years to come. So, this decision is extremely important that you're going to make tonight. I see that you did talk to some other communities, Westlake, Thousand Oaks, and Moor Park, and I'm happy to see that. But I'm concerned about why you never contacted neighborhood councils. This never went in front of them, and that's what this body is for. They're supposed to hear residents, get the feedback, and give it back to you. Why didn't you want to hear that? Why didn't it go in front of them? It's really important. That's what they're there for. With a population of approximately 126,000 people, we need to hear from the residents of our community. Not just RV owners, but the residents. Going back to Walmart now, it was suggested that we put Walmart up at the mall. The council was ready to do that. They wanted to put it up there. And the community wanted no part of it. Kind of like what we're having here. You're hearing from RV people. You're not hearing from residents. So, what did we do? We put it to a vote. We actually put it on a ballot. We've got a vote coming up in 2024. Gives you plenty of time to write this out and get it on a ballot so you can hear everybody's comments as to how they want this community to look going forward. Because I can guarantee you, once you put this in this place, you don't have the manpower to go ahead and do the proactive or reactive to make sure this comes to every neighborhood that is in compliance. We're not in compliance now. So, think about it. Think out of the box. Think how we're really going to do this because it's going to affect us for a long, long time. Proactive, reactive? I don't know, folks, but if you put it to a vote, you're really going to know how this community feels about what you're about to do tonight. Thank you.
John Lapper?
Mayor Thomas and City Council. First of all, thank you, Barbara Williamson. Perhaps you speak much more eloquently than the tone of the I come across with, but perhaps I've got a little more passion. I couldn't agree more about the neighborhood councils. I definitely brought it up to this council in a public statement and emails to everybody about involving the neighborhood council, and even inquired about the Planning Commission, too. There's a few arguments out there that I just think are not relevant. The argument that a property owner can do as they please with their property has no merit in Municipal Code law. I hope that it's not an argument the council is giving credit to. It is the city's responsibility, and specifically, the City Council's authority, to mandate through ordinance codes to protect the residents of Simi Valley. Not control, but protect in maintaining safety, community standards, and property values to all residents. It would appear from listening to Mayor Protem judge that he brought forth the proposal to increase the front yard residential parking to 70% to accommodate a resident who wanted to park his RV on the opposite side of his garage next to his neighbor's house and without a curb cutout. I can only surmise that the increase to 70% was to accommodate an individual with a small lot that would necessitate his yard being paved 70%. If a lot is so small to require 70% paving to place an RV next to their neighbor's house, perhaps they need to seek other alternatives. The major problem I have with going to a 70% from 50% is the can of worms that would be opened if homeowners were allowed to turn their front yards into 70% parking lots. If one can do it for an RV, why not for cars? This would place an unnecessary burden on code enforcement who has had difficulty with dealing with RV complaints as it is for the last five years. If a residential front yard was 70% parking lot, envision the blight it could potentially create. The loss of property value to the neighbors. Apparently, no other cities allow more than the current 50%. Staff has not answered that question. Well, they did tonight. Again, why open Pandora's box? Because a couple special interest residents ask for special accommodations at the expense to the community. How can you ignore five years of RV parking complaints and make matters worse by changing the Municipal Code to allow residential front yards to become 70% parking lots? I just have to ask why we want to take that leap. It is so unnecessary. Another excuse cop out is the drought. Artificial turf concerns hardscape, drought-resistant landscaping. All are unknowns and a poor excuse to turn residential front yards into parking lots at this time. There will always be better alternatives to a parking lot. Please leave the front yard parking guideline at 50%, which is bad enough. Thank you very much.
Jim Woods?
Good evening. Mr. Thomas, Mr. Judge. Thank you, TV, DeeDee, I'm sorry, for answering me back when I text or emailed you. And thank you, guys, for serving. Not a fun job. First of all, I'm all in favor of freedom. I'm all in favor of doing what you wanted on your own property, but not at the expense of mine. I live in a cul-de-sac right up here above the library. We all have RVs. We've all paid to have paving or concrete or paving stones behind fences, or even my motorhome is in front of my fence. Tastefully done. We don't want anybody, our neighbor, to destroy our property value. And when someone moves, we go, oh, God, who's going to move in? We've been very lucky. I've been here since 1988. Moved here in 2002, and tickle, love Simi Valley. I'm kind of spoiled. I have a dual occupancy. I also live in Lake Havasu. We don't have those rules. It's an older community. It's a desert. And we have houses that are just cluttered with crap everywhere. Luckily, none by my home. But it really does hurt the people that live around there, and they're eyesores. I don't think we want that in Simi Valley. We already do. We have one on Cochrane with a great big fifth wheel, and the whole parking lot is filled with cars. A Jeep, a truck, this, that. It looks like crap. I wouldn't want to live next door to that, would any of you? We also have them on Royal. We have homes that are filled with way too many people, with way too many cars before long. They're parked everywhere. Let's just move to the San Fernando Valley. I work Wednesday a week over at Hill and Recede. I could go park. It's everywhere over there. It's disgusting. And those homes used to be gorgeous, gorgeous homes. Not anymore. 70%? No way, please. Please protect our beautiful city we have. I didn't move up here to move to San Fernando Valley. I moved here to move to Simi Valley and have the safe community we have with concerned citizen, a police chief that's willing to bring back motorcops to write tickets to all these obnoxious guys going too fast. And have people like you, Fred, that'll take your time to run for mayor, and you, Mike, that have been around for a long time. On another note, though, if, and I have a neighbor down the street. His father-in-law is probably 80. He's doing okay. Lives in a fifth wheel in his backyard. It's a paved patch. He had sewer put in. It's an alternative living for his father-in-law. What a great choice of a beautiful motorhome or trailer that none of the neighbors care about. We need permits to do that. So, someone who can do it and go to the neighbors' round and get it okay and allow it to be done, because that's good stuff. I'm going to get older someday. Already old. Front yards, they can't just be for everything out there. They have to have some street sense, some eyeball. When you drive up the street, when we bought our house here, I looked at it, goes, oh, my God, what can I do there? I'm an 80, I got 42 rose bushes, a green yard. I hate artificial turf. And all the neighbors say, your yard is so nice. Can I steal your roses? I say, and take the lemons, too. Just don't touch the grapefruits. We need a citizens group, as it was said earlier. I am a past neighborhood council member. I served a term. My wife served a term. It was very important. We did a lot. We didn't like the thing going on here on. We didn't like the thing going on here on Alamo and Tappo, that's for sure. And we hate to see any more of that coming. But I understand that's not us. That's our lovely gap in Sacramento. So how about we be reactive if we have problems? Neighbor up the street has a beautiful 40-foot fifth wheel. He camps all the time. He parks in front of his house. No one complains. So let's not bother him. Now, he does also park and have a place to park it. But he's had it roped off. He's had stuff stolen. It's $410 a month. It's pretty silly. That's expensive when he's on a side street that no one goes up and down. And by permit, how about we start a permit process? Because if, if they have to go in for a permit to do anything, then they're doing it by the laws and the rules we've asked. So if you want to put it on one side, this side, put one over there, they have no problem. It's on their own property, behind their fence. It doesn't show. And my neighbor's got too much on one side, all behind his fence. Never see it. It's all clean, and he's a great neighbor. Just, let's just do it the right way, and let's think about it before we vote on it and make, I think, a really wrong decision to go to 70% in our front yards. Thank you all for serving. I appreciate it.
Jerry Placeres?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I bought my house in 1986. I did not buy it in HOA because I didn't want people to be telling me what I had to do with my property, what color I had to paint my house, where I had to put everything. I bought it because it had room for me to put an RV inside of there, which became an integral part of my life and my kids' lives. It's changed their whole lives with all the camping that we've done and everything. Now that I'm thinking about retiring and everything, that's what I look forward to do now, is to spend my time relaxing and enjoying our country. If I got to spend $4,000, $5,000 to be able to park that rig someplace after I bought a house that I can put it there, that's really going to increment what I have to do. More than likely, may have to sell my RV. Now, some of us have garages that are sideways. I don't have a garage door on the street. Mine's in front. I can't park one inside of there because now I'm blocking part of my house. I should be able to be able to park it on the other side as long as I continue to keep having that much property that you guys want for landscaping and everything. What does it matter if it's on that side? I hear people here saying, oh, the neighbors. You know what? I got neighbors on both sides. Doesn't matter. You give me the right to park it by a garage. A neighbor's got an RV next to their house. Go on the other side. They've got it there, too. What are they going to do for an infrastructure to accommodate all these RVs that are going to have to go park someplace? Where are they going to go with them? We don't have any place out here for that. We don't have all that open land. We keep growing everything. People complain about all the parking. Well, wait a minute. We have a state government that's allowing us to put so many apartments inside our houses with all of these cars. Where are they going to go? It isn't just that. People complain that the RVs look terrible. What about your neighbor's house that's next door that they haven't mowed their lawn in six years now? They have washing machines in their front yard. I don't see nobody complaining about that stuff or anything. It's just, I think we need to watch a little bit more, but we also have to look on the side of garages because not all of us have that option. If I have to park it in front of my garage door, that means I parallel park mine right in front of my house then because that's where I get to park it. Now, people don't want it to be blocking part of their house. Well, most of us have five feet of side yards. You go to the side. On my side that my garage isn't there, I have an eight-foot wide vehicle. I got five feet there plus three feet. I'm blocking off three feet of the front of my house. I'm not blocking off 20% of my house. I'm not doing any of that. It's three additional feet. So it's not like I'm blocking off my house. Stop complaining about blocking off my house. I'll tell you what, my house with my RV inside of there and my 60% landscaping go inside of there is more beautiful than most of the people's houses around here. So I don't know why everybody has a hard time with those RVs. Maybe it's because they don't own them. Maybe they don't like camping. But you know what? That's a way of life for a hell of a lot of us people here in Simi Valley. And everybody was talking about, well, do they allow it in other cities? Don't anybody drive around? You don't see all of the RVs in front of everybody's houses in every single one of the cities in Ventura County? They're everywhere. They're not just in Simi Valley. So you can't compare. You just drive around, see what they're doing about it. See if anybody else is changing all of these laws and everything like that. I just know that was the reason why I bought my house, because I had a place to put it. It's sitting on concrete. It doesn't bother anybody over there. I enjoy my lifestyle of being able to go camping whenever I want to to get away from the rat race that we have here. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Richard Neff?
Good evening. I'd like, I'm Richard Neff. I have lived in Simi Valley for over 30 years, my wife and I. I'd like to thank the city council members, as others have, for your service, first of all. Appreciate that. And I would like to speak in opposition to RVs parked in the front yard or any other conspicuous placement, especially in the front yard, or having a second RV or large vehicles parked in the front yard along with the first one. This issue has been batted around, as I think we all know, for many years. In fact, I thought we had solved it last year when I received in the mail this brochure. It's dated July 1, 2022. It's titled Residential Off-Street Parking Standards Issued by the City of Simi Valley. I thought we had solved the problem with this, but apparently not. I'd like to know where this went, what happened to this brochure. So here we are. It's not that those of us who are in opposition are opposed to RVs. No way, no way. When I was younger and had two boys growing up, we had a pop-up camper. We went camping, had wonderful times, a lot of joyful times, visiting states around the US. Pop-up campers were more popular then. Now we've grown to bigger RVs, which poses different problems, I think. So the issue seems to be come, to come down to those of us who think RVs have a place, just not in our front yards, who think our neighbors deserve, the neighbors of those who have RVs deserve and have the right to a clear view down the street, across the street, to their neighbors across the street's front yard. That's one side of it. The other side is those who think they own the property so they should be able to do anything they want to it, with it, including RVs. But we don't live any longer here in Simi Valley in some small town. We're not a town out in the desert. We're a city, over 100,000 inhabitants. And I think with that comes the rights of people in the city to, to have certain responsibilities. And let me pose a hypothetical to you. If you were, had a choice, if you had a choice between your next-door neighbor who had a nice green lawn thanks to the abundant rains we've had this year, with a perimeter around that green lawn of flowering bushes, well-kept, or in years of drought, maybe that green lawn turns to artificial turf. Maybe it even turns to desert landscaping. But that would be one hypothetical to you. The other choice would be living next door to your neighbor who has an RV that stretches all the way down to the sidewalk, blocking your view down one way of the street, and also posing a considerable safety issue in that when you leave for work every morning, you drive out your driveway, back down onto the street. You can't be quite as sure because you can't see that well whether there's traffic coming your way. Or another safety issue, children running down the sidewalk, and you can't see them coming because your view is obstructed that way as you back down into the street. Or someone walking their dog, listening to music on their earbuds and not paying attention, and you can't see them coming. So all, there's a safety issue here as well as an aesthetic issue. Property values have been mentioned. I can imagine that having a big monstrous RV in your front yard will increase or improve your property value, or that of your neighbors, for that matter. So in closing, over time, is it too much to ask you, City Council, to consider the safety of our neighborhoods, the aesthetic values of our neighbors, being able to look out your front window of your house across the street clearly and see into your neighbor's front yard or your side yard window and see clearly? I think we have those responsibilities to consider as RV owners.
Okay, I'm going to have to wrap it up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Cameron Thompson?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I also want to speak about this, this issue. I think everyone's been very eloquent. So I just wanted to say that I think that your vote to amend the existing regulation of 50% front yard landscaping to 32% will make my neighborhood look like a parking lot. Some more negative consequences that I listed here are, there's no limit now, as I understand it, on the number of vehicles. It could be boats, number or type of vehicles. They could be boats, RVs, motorcycles, et cetera, could be in the front yard. And there's no restriction that the RV parked in the front yard must belong to the homeowner, and nor has it been definitely confirmed that the RV could not be rented out as living space, as stated by the, I think by the city attorney that was quoted in the Acorn, which was very helpful to me, and as was Mr. Laffer's letter in the Acorn. I am on Neighborhood Council One, and I live in the Texas tract. And I thought, what, you know, how did I miss this issue? Was I sleeping or what went on? But I guess now that I'm hearing that it was never presented. So I do feel that, you know, culpable, but I still feel like that would have been a really good thing if we could have met and discussed this. I think most of the members in my council would have been interested in dealing with it. And also, adding more paving to front yards is going to increase the heat in the city and restrict the natural flow of rainwater into the groundwater table, thus diminishing our water resources. So that's another consideration. I hope you will reconsider your vote to amend the regulation and preserve our neighborhoods. Okay, thank you very much.
Peter Means? Peter Means?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm not speaking.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last speaker.
Does staff deserve to respond to any of those comments?
Yes, Mayor Thomas, the, a couple of the people from the public did mention neighborhood council. The RV or residential vehicle parking in front yards did go to neighborhood council roughly in 2019. I remember I did a couple of those presentations. It was prior to the pandemic starting. The only difference is, is that those meetings were not specific to the solution as being presented tonight. But it did go to neighborhood council and planning commission as an iteration of the discussion, but not the specific solution proposed.
Okay, it's this time the hearing is now closed.
Sorry, excuse me.
Yes, I think one more item that was, is brought up. There's a misconception as to, the comment was made that, that they could park whatever, as many RVs and what have you. So as far as automobiles, we don't have a way to restrict that. But if this court amendment went through and, and allowed the parking area on the opposite side, then we can restrict the RVs to one. Otherwise, there's no restrictions. So it's a little bit of clarification from that, those comments.
Okay. Right, passenger vehicles would be unlimited still.
Can you address the living in an RV also?
So before we do that, the hearing is now closed. All right, any, any questions or comments from, from council? And I'm going to start with Mayor Protam judge. Okay, well, we need to have a discussion then. Okay, well, Councilmember Rhodes. Are you Mayor Protam now, as, immediately?
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Kavanaugh, would you like to ask your question? Because it was one of the same ones I had.
Well, it was, somebody had made a comment, and I wanted staff to address that because I felt that they should. I believe we have an ordinance. You're not allowed to live in an RV, correct?
Yes, that was one of the other comments. It was a good concern, but the living in the recreational vehicle is not a permitted use on the property.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank everybody for coming out and speaking on this. This is a tough one because it affects everybody. And please remember that we, on the council, are your neighbors as well, and we are subject to that which we decide. And if someone wants to park an RV next to my house at the end of this, that would be a consequence of, of the action as well. So we take it not only as the responsibility of looking out for everybody in the city, but we have to live by it as well. So we're, we're doing the deep dive on trying to find out what is the best for all situations. Barbara? I miss you, being able to speak up here so eloquently and so articulately. We, I don't know that the mall comparison is 100% applicable here, but I understand the general push of the direction of that, and, and I hear you. I get it. I don't know that putting it to a vote gets us where we want to be ultimately, but I heard you. Mr. Woods, the clutter and too many cars. You had so many great points that you brought up. One of the things that we are trying to do with this ordinance is put guardrails around clutter. So here's, here's the, what the world we live in today is that we're being told by Sacramento's we must add ADUs without restrictions. We must build. We must add housing. If we don't add housing, we're going to get penalized. Something's going to get cluttered. Our streets will get cluttered with cars, and then we will be choked off being able to drive up and down our street safely. Or we have an opportunity to possibly get one more off-street parking without taking an on-street parking to do so. And that in itself is solving a potential upcoming problem. We're trying to look at the totality of all of the things that are being forced upon us. Another observation was, these are not pop-up trailers anymore. These RVs are our second homes, and they're huge. And I also heard, being a good neighbor is a great way to live your life, and I also agree with that. If we talk to our neighbors. I have a goose neck horse trailer. And if I was really skilled, which I am not, I might be able to fit it beside my house. I'm not gonna risk that. My HOA says, I cannot put it in front of my house, and HOA takes precedence in this matter. They can be more restrictive than the city guidelines. So I choose to find a place off-site to pay for that. That's being good to my trailer, but it's also being good to my neighbors. And I'm also following the HOA rules. So there are many layers to this. I believe that my vote tonight is for the reduction of clutter, not the increase of it. I believe that it's in the, hey, John, it's my turn. So not everybody's gonna be happy at the end of this. But I think that if we look at where we are with the RVs that are existing there today and bringing them into compliance, and looking forward into what the city might become with the more dense living conditions, like somebody mentioned Tappo Alamo that are being forced upon us, we have to consider where people are going to park. So it is a tough one. And please remember, we're your neighbors too. We gotta live with this.
Councilmember Lister?
Thank you. Just wanted to make a few comments. I appreciate, thank you, all of you who took the time to come and express your opinions and your observations. I want to make it very clear that I think RV ownership is a wonderful thing and supportive of it. In fact, just anecdotally, that I too had wonderful memories as a child, or not as a child, as an adult, taking my kids RVing and going to the beach camping with our RV. It was wonderful until it broke down several times out of state. And then that was the end of my RV experience. But I know the joy and understand it. And I want to be sure that my comments tonight are in no way construed to be against RVs because I think it's wonderful to own them, wonderful to be able to keep them on your property if it's done in such a way that it is not invasive to others. I think it's pretty clear that we are already quite generous with what we allow for RV parking, and I'm glad that is the case. I think we should be very careful with taking it too far. Now, interestingly enough, I am not opposed to having opposite-side parking on the other side if that is more conducive for someone's RV. If the other side fits better, if it's aesthetically more pleasing, if it makes more sense. My concern is the reduction of landscaping and the increase of paving, and what that can mean in terms of parking and aesthetics and a variety of things. I do think that 50% landscaping is very important. We are the HOA for the city. It is our responsibility to look at the totality of our residents. I'm concerned, I appreciate the fact that by going forward with this, if I understand correctly, the only time now that we would be limiting an RV to one for the front yard is if now, at this point, they apply for a parking strip on the other side. That is the only time where, and then which case, then they can be regulated. Otherwise, right now, already we allow for multiple recreational vehicle parking in the front. So it doesn't change what the majority of parking is right now. It would just be going forward, we could possibly restrict in some way. And I appreciate that element of it, but I don't think it gets to where our desire is. I think personally, the enforcement is almost impossible with this discussion of what we're doing. And I don't think it is right that enforcement only happens if there are neighbors that complain. I think that we should be making laws and making regulations and code that makes sense for everyone and is intuitive and understood and that can be enforced just normally. And so I'm concerned that we are just making it more difficult for our code enforcement. So I guess my recommendation is going to be, at the end of our discussion, we all have our comments. My recommendation is that, yes, we go forward with allowing this other-side parking if we can still maintain a 50% landscape requirement. As it is, if I understand my response, if you're one of the smaller lots, as it is, you still wouldn't be able to have that opposite-side parking because then you're below 30% already. It's, again, we're just legislating or doing code for a certain-sized property. It just, to me, doesn't feel right. So just, I want to be very clear that I can see the value of it if it doesn't affect our aesthetics and if we can continue with appreciating what we have currently and not making it more difficult for others. And so, anyway, I'm gonna make that recommendation at the end, but I just want to be clear that that's my position. So thank you.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of comments. Thank you all very much for coming out, Barbara. It's always a pleasure to meet you, or to see you again, so. And I really appreciate your thought process and all of this and everyone else. So, true transparency, my daughter and her husband have a large RV, but it fits on the side of their house, on the side of their garage, or behind a gate. So I have no conflict there. I have a huge parking lot or parking driveway, and I don't have an RV, and I'm not renting it out, just so everyone knows, okay? I used to let my dad keep it there, but he passed away 10 years. So we're done there. But there were a lot of good comments made, and I think the most important thing that I kept hearing and that I've read from all the emails is people want our landscape to be kept. They want that 50% landscaping. They don't want us to lower that, any lower than it currently is. But again, I also like the fact that if you cannot park an RV on your driveway or your garage side, that you should be able to get a special permit to park it on the other side as long as we can maintain all the other regulations that are currently in place. Then the positive about doing that is that you're only allowed one RV. So that means you're, it means you can't have an RV on the special side that you've gotten a permit for and an RV over on the garage side. So it does limit a little bit, the clutter, you might say, allowed in a front yard. Right now, we don't have any limitations, and we're not allowed to put limitations on what's allowed in the driveway, I believe. Is that not correct? Or we just don't have that? Sorry, Sean, I'm putting you on the spot.
You could park any sort of vehicle in the driveway as long as it's not commercial.
Okay, that's what I thought. So there's already pretty much a little bit of openings to that. And I drive around and I look, and yes, there are, obviously, there are homes in our community that have overdone it. But the majority of them aren't overdone because of RVs. They're overdone just because of cars being parked if you go down certain streets within the community. Most people who have RVs take care of them because they're expensive, and they usually want to make sure that they're well taken care of and, you know, and they're in their yards. And I do hear from people that when they do find someplace to store them, because I know it's, everything is pretty much, I think, booked up. You can't find anything. You do run the risk of having it broken into and, you know, those type of things. So most people do prefer to have them at their home. And again, the other thing, a couple of you said, when you purchase a home and you're planning on having an RV, that's something you look at. It is one of the things that you should be asking for and looking at ahead of time. And most people do, I believe, you know, and a lot of people have an RV, I shouldn't say a lot. I know of some people that have an RV on the opposite side because they were told by their realtor at the time, whenever it was, you know, 10, 20 years ago, that, oh, you have RV access available, you know, RV access, don't worry about it. And so that's kind of caused a problem over the years. I like Barbara's comment that once we give it away, we can't take it back. You know, and that's what kind of worries me there, more so than some of the other things. I do like the fact that the excess or the off-side parking would be permit-only. And then we also would be able to possibly look at curb cuts depending on the situation, and the curb cuts are at the cost of the homeowner because we kind of discussed that. Trying to see if there were any other notes that I wanted to cover, the fact that we can't live in it. And I think those are all my comments right now, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, I don't have an objection to an RV being parked on a pad on one side of the house or the other. I don't think it's particularly attractive, but I mean, it's just, you know, an option. What I don't think is necessary is to have a pad on both sides. I still believe it should be one side or the other. I think if you're gonna put on the alternate side it's because you don't have or would prefer not to have it on the side of the garage. And as far as front yard landscaping, I'm holding firm at the 50%. Now, that's where I'm at. So at this point, I will now entertain a motion, if someone has one.
Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce ordinance number 1353, amending portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code, to modify residential off-street parking standards, front yard landscaping requirements, and rear yard vehicle access, gates, and screening.
Friendly amendment to that, Councilmember Judge, where we go forward with that with the with the change that landscaping remains at the 50%. It can go forward if it remains at 50%.
Well, the way we've done this for the last seven years now, we've come to this conclusion. And I look at it like Councilmember Rhodes alluded to, and Councilmember Kavanaugh stated very well and very eloquently. This is not going to be something that happens to everybody's house here in Simi Valley. This is only for people that have the room on the opposite side of the garage to put a new strip in so that they can put their RV on that side where it will fit instead of having a place to store it somewhere else or maybe putting it in their normal driveway where it almost touches the sidewalk. That is what this ordinance does. Lowering the landscaping requirement allows people to do that with a permit. Again, benefit to this is, one RV will be allowed on that property with this driveway cut. I don't, if, and that's the reason this was brought forward is because some people don't have access to that side without limiting the driveway, without limiting the landscaping. Because for some reason, there was heartache with driving over your own landscaping or driving over something else to get to that other side of your house. And since we can't seem to get around that, lowering the requirement for landscaping is the only way I see we can do this.
And just to clarify your amended motion or proposal, there's only one section, one size of lots that are above 50% under the current allowances anyway. And so the 60-foot lot width with allowances is already at 48, and the narrower lots like 40-foot are already at 15%. So restricting it to 50 puts those back up.
No, as I understand what was shown in the diagram, and again, it depends on, as the mayors point out, whether or not they have paved the side additional to the garage. That factors into it. If they've not paved that area, then, so it is all a matter of schematics. And, but as I understand the way the frontage is, whether it's 65, if it's in that range, they can still pave the other side as long as they don't have extra pavement on that side. There's a range, you maybe can correct me. I believe it would still be reachable by many properties. But either way, it's not reachable if you've got a 40-foot front. It might be reachable if you have a 65-foot front, depending on how much pavement you already have. Certainly, if you have an 80-foot frontage, it's reachable.
It's also three-dimensional. It's not just the frontage, it's how deep the-
Absolutely, you're right. You're absolutely right.
...the street.
You're absolutely right. 50%, just, so all those things factor into it. So I, 80, you know, you're right. If it's a deeper property, it's 65 feet, certainly. If they already have quite a bit of pavement already going on their garage side, maybe not. But the whole point is aesthetically, there is already a lot of pavement there. Councilmember Judge, I understand your point. We're trying to help people select a site, park where it is convenient for them and allow it. I'm just-
So in clarification-
Sure.
Hypothetical. So someone has paved the garage side all the way to the lot line.
Correct.
Now they want to switch, and they're gonna go to the opposite side. You would say, if you will tear up that concrete and remove it so that you have more landscaping, then you'll be above 50% and you can park on the other side.
I would say, find a way to make your property look aesthetically attractive, and maybe that is an option if that really was important to them. But I'm mindful of what most of, I'm thinking even the street that I live on, which I think is about 65-foot frontage. If everyone decided to suddenly put in one on the other side and reduce, it would drastically affect the vision of my neighborhood. And I think property values. So again, it depends on the depth and what's already there, et cetera, so.
My only rebuttal to that is the fact that, again, this isn't going to be done. We passed this tonight. It is not going to have a rush on planning tomorrow to make driveways in their front yards. This is a certain, this is a very directed type of ordinance. Now, if people want to make the driveway on the other side, well, then they're looking at almost $5,000 minimum commitment to that with concrete, rebar, and everything else. Whereas it wouldn't make sense financially to tear up your front yard just to get that other driveway if you don't have a reason to have it. This is gonna be for that one small segment of our community that parks their RVs in that driveway they have, which we cannot regulate anyways, which we do not regulate, and keeps that from touching the sidewalk. Or better yet, gets it out of the, that one side of the house that's not conducive to having that RV. And again, it also lowers the number of RVs you have in the front yard. That's only the way I look at it. It's like, I don't see this as being something tomorrow. Everybody's gonna run out and want to dump five grand on a driveway.
Well, here's a different perspective. You know, if it was a smaller property that had a standard driveway the width of their garage, and they wanted to put a pad on the opposite side, and that would take it below the 50%, I personally wouldn't have a problem with that. My problem is where you've got a larger lot, and you tell them that they can pave all but 30% of that front yard. Now you're talking about a lot of paving out in front of these yards. And that's what I have an issue with.
I would too, but that's, I don't see that's gonna happen.
That's not, well, that's not the case.
But it's allowed. By what we're passing, it would be allowed.
If they wanted to dump more money into their paving and stuff, yeah, it would be.
And rent it out for, and put whatever vehicles they wanted to, except another RV.
I don't see that happening, though. So, no, I don't want to take the amendment. I'll stick with my original motion.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna take that hypothetical again, Fred, because that's not how I understand it. You're on a larger lot, and you've paved in front of your garage, and you've paved to the lot line on the garage side, and you've added a walkway to your house, and then you decide to put a parking pad on the other side? In that size of a lot, I don't believe, even with the allowances, you're gonna be able to go under 50%.
Why not?
But, but again, back to my original point. In my opinion, you should be allowed to have a driveway, a walkway, and a pad, a pad. That's my feeling. You have it on the garage side or you have it on the other side? That's, if it was up to me, that's what I would say.
All right, we have a motion.
We have a motion. I haven't heard a second.
I'll second.
Okay, call for a vote.
The motion fails. Do we want a second motion?
We can entertain one.
Do you? I'm trying to think of wording, because I don't think they're- So I would move that we allow additional paving on the other side for one RV if it does not in any way take landscaping below 50% and keeps in all the other requirements, which are not more than one RV's parked on the front of the house.
And I'd like to add an amendment to that motion. I would be fine with that motion. As long as they're specifically noted, there will be- There will be no prohibition against driving over your landscaping, or driving over the existing curb to get to that pad.
I don't think we have that restriction.
I think the current one said that they had to, they had to sign a waiver, and if, if there's damage-
That was going to be in this one.
That's in me.
Over the curb. If they bounce the curb.
If they bounce the curb.
Yes. That, that's currently as it's written.
So I would continue, want to continue with that, is that what you're?
I think everything except for the 30%.
I think, if, if I understand correctly, Councilmember Lister, the only change you want in what's proposed is changing 30% to 50%.
I, I think so, unless, and here's where I'd like to have the discussion with Mayor, because one of the original proposals was not to have, it was as if there, if there wasn't already concrete additional parking on the one side, as I recall, that was one of the recommendations.
Yeah.
I'm not really sure where that went by the wayside, because, you know, my original understanding was, for those that were unable, or, or, you know, you know, to put that pad on the, adjacent to their garage, that there had been a lot of requests to be able to put it on the other side so they could have a pad, so they could park their RV. I believed all those times that that's what we were doing.
That was one of the proposals, that was one of the, that was one of the proposals, but it didn't make that motion the very first time.
I think it kind of fell into the part where we restricted it to one RV. I think that might have washed that out a little bit, but I know what you're saying.
So I, to the Mayor's encouragement, I would also add to the motion then that, that only be allowed if they already, if they don't already have the paved additional extension on the, on the driveway side for parking.
Well, is that the additional paving or room for an RV? Because there's, there's two different things, because I, I look at my mom's, where she, and she has that side paved, but it's not big enough for an RV.
Got it.
You know, it's not long enough for an RV.
Got it.
So she would have to do it on the opposite side if, if she were going to do that.
The only thing I would add is, if we get too complicated with what we're trying to do, my recommendation would probably be to have staff come back with language rather than us trying to figure out what we're doing right now. Because there seems to be a couple of different amendments that I'm hearing beyond the 50%.
Okay, so I, I think the motion then is that we go back to allowing it, but, but landscaping must be maintained at 50%. Allowing other side parking if landscaping is maintained.
Okay, that's a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
So just, I'm, just so I can clarify, on page 11, exception 2 would go away. And on page 13, 7A would change from 30 to 50. Just so I can get that on the record.
Mm-hmm.
That's what the attorney says.
I got it now? So on page 11, part 2, uh, part 1, number 2, C2 would, would just be eliminated, because the current restriction is 50% now.
Correct, correct.
And then on page 13, 7A would, the minimum would be 50%, as opposed to 30%, as it's written. It's the only places I'm seeing it in the draft ordinance.
Okay, I've got that, thank you.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Public hearing, item 5B, a public hearing to consider city-initiated specific plan amendment SP-S-2023-0001 to amend the West End specific plan, W-E-S-P, to modify the land use matrix for commercial and industrial uses, update development standards for retail stores, a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and introduction of an ordinance. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance number 1354, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley for city-initiated specific plan amendment SP-S-2023-0001 to amend the West End specific plan, W-E-S-P, to modify the land use matrix for commercial and industrial uses, update development standards for retail stores, and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the additional environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act. And Deputy Environmental Services Director Sean Gibson and Associate Planner Zarui Chaparayan are here to present this item.
Are there any conflicts or ex parte communication to report? Now, staff would present their report, please.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, and members of the City Council. Tonight's item involves text amendments to our West End specific plan. In a nutshell, we are proposing revisions to allow additional types of businesses to locate and operate within the specific plan boundaries. This includes adding additional permitted and conditional uses to match uses that are already allowed in similar zones in the city. This effort streamlines the approval process for businesses, reduces time spent and permit costs, and helps attract additional businesses to the city. Our associate planner Zarui Chaparayan has the presentation.
Thank you, Sean. Good evening, honorable members of the City Council. Tonight's staff will provide proposed amendments to the West End specific plan to modify the land use matrix for commercial and industrial uses in the specific plan area and update development standards for retail stores. Currently, a number of land uses in the West End specific plan are more restrictive than similar zones in other parts of the city. These amendments will help level the playing field. The West End specific plan was adopted in 1983 and amended most recently in October of 2021 to allow microbreweries and distilleries. The intent of the specific plan is to provide objectives, standards, and guidelines for the development of big-box commercial and industrial uses. The specific plan is made up of nine zones listed on screen. The land use categories in the West End specific plan land use matrix are based upon the Standard Industrial Classification Manual, or SIC codes, issued by the U.S. Office of Management and Budget. In most cases, SIC codes are used to define uses within a category and define the land use categories. Today, the SIC codes are updated by private industries to keep industries current in a changing market. And up until 2006, SIC codes were also used in the Simi Valley Municipal Code. However, in an overarching code update, SIC codes were removed from the land use matrix and category descriptions were made broader. On October 18, 2023, staff presented the proposed modifications to the specific plan to the Planning Commission, expanding certain allowable uses as well as easing uses in the West End specific plans, light industrial, general industrial, auto industrial, and subregional retail zones. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the changes to the specific plan with amendments with a four to, four to zero vote. As is pictured on screen, the West End specific plan area is sandwiched between First Street on the east side, Oak Park, I'm sorry, Oak Park to the west side, West Los Angeles Avenue, West Easy Street, and the railroad tracks to the south, and unincorporated Ventura County to the north, and the 118 freeway running through it. The West End, highlighted in yellow, includes approximately 869 acres and borders industrial and commercial uses along the south and east. Some major industrial and commercial companies include Costco, Home Depot, and Anwin Scientific, Simi Valley Business Park, and the District Industrial Condos. Listed on the screen are the zones staff analyzed and expanded uses for. The images show, shown are current industrial and commercial businesses within the West End. The amendments are meant to preserve the industrial zone in the city by streamlining the process, keeping uses consistent in and out of the specific plan area, and keeping the specific plan area in the city competitive in the region for innovative industries and job growth. Upon reviewing allowed uses and entitlement processes in the city's overall light and general industrial zones, staff added more manufacturing and industrial uses while adding uses that could service the West End specific plans, light industrial and general industrial zones. Shown here is an example of the proposed changes. For furniture manufacturing, staff changed entitlement from a conditional use permit, or C, to a permitted use, or P, which is allowed in the non-West End specific plan general industrial and light industrial zones. Also shown is the addition of the primary metal industries to the West End, not previously allowed, but allowed in non-West End specific plan GI and LI zones with a conditional use permit. Staff also matched auto industrial uses to the light industrial uses, as the auto industrial zone is no longer feasible as strictly an auto-oriented zone. Staff also reviewed allowed uses in the CDs, city's CPD zone per the municipal code, and replicated uses into the West End specific plan SR zone. Some of these include, but are not limited to, to those on screen. A full list of the changes are provided in Exhibit 2 of your staff report. Most of the uses were changed from conditional use permits to permitted uses. Staff finds that those uses that were added as or remained as conditional require further evaluation and conditions that would not interfere with the surrounding uses. Last but not least, staff is recommending to eliminate the minimum and maximum square footage requirements for retailers in the West End specific plan. Currently, retail stores in the West End need to be between 6,000 to 70,000 square feet, depending on the type of retailer. Currently, if a business wanted to locate here, they would not meet the development standards for the size requirements. Therefore, in an effort to encourage businesses, staff is recommending removal of the size standards requirement, and the size restriction is no longer effective in today's retail environment. The Planning Commission recommends that the City Council introduce an ordinance approving SP-S-2023-0001 and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Lister.
Thank you. I, I did, I want to ask some questions earlier of Mr. Paris, and I'm grateful for his responses, but I'd like to just maybe ask one question again, because I was slightly concerned. I recognize that in this West End, a, a specific plan is the only automotive, automotive industrial zone area that we have in the entire city, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so I was just a little concerned that by making some changes, we might be diluting that intent of having, and I just want, and so my, I guess my question is, do you see this as benefiting our automotive, automotive industry in any way, or just has it materialized as intensive as we expected, or, I just, how do you think it might affect the automotive district area?
I, I, Councilmember Lister, the automotive overlay zone is kind of a boutique zone, it's not something you find everywhere.
Mm-hmm.
It's, there may have been an original intent back in the 90s and 80s to create that area to spark auto dealership type businesses. In my 24 years here, about 98% of the uses are non-auto related in that area, so dealing with the zoning counter and these inquiries for that long, it's, it's been more of a headache than a-
Because you've had to do conditional uses for everything else, basically.
Either CUP, conditional use permit, or the use is just not allowed. And people see a place for rent, and I've told them dozens of times, you can't go there because it's the AI zone.
Got it. And so, so how long has, actually, I was, this was a fairly detailed report. How long has this been in the making, in terms of making these changes? I'm just kind of curious, how long you been working on this, Sean?
I, I, well, I've been trying to work on it for 11 years, so.
Okay, I just-
It's, it's always on the back burner. We've, we've been very, Brian and I and Strazam have been very creative in getting people in there. This, this is more of a cleanup than a initiative. We just like to codify, because there's a few loose ends, we just like to clear up, and there's often problems with banks and lenders wanting that zoning data, so we're just trying to, try and do the right thing and just make it more accurate.
Got it, okay. I, I appreciate it. And do you, do you foresee this then, the greatest benefit is going to be just potential business more, bringing in more opportunities, or more, or just less saying no at the counter, or just, do you actually see that this might drive more business into these areas, or more?
We, we deal with email and phone inquiries. If, you can imagine, some people may not even contact us. If they do their homework without asking, they might, we might never hear about them. So if they just go straight to the book, not allowed, they might move on to another city. So there's always a chance that we're missing opportunities.
Got it, okay. Well, thank you for your responses, appreciate it.
Councilmember Rhodes? Amir Brod, him, Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this report, and, and thank you for the cleanup on it. I actually read the thing. I actually looked at what was being changed and moved into different zones. I, I only had one creative question, which was already answered before the meeting started, and I, I won't take the time here, but I, I do want to say the benefit for the city is business development. And if we want to attract the types of businesses we want to attract, it's going to make it so much cleaner and easier. So thank you for that, thank you for getting it in front of us, and great job. Oh, and the, to the Planning Commission that looked at it as well. I read their, their notes and reports, and so it was a great cleanup, thank you.
Thanks. I'd like to thank Ms. Chaparayan and Ms. Pedrosa for actually getting it through the finish line.
And I'll say, I have a comment to make, but we have, this is a hearing, so we're doing questions first, is that correct? And then we're coming back to comments. Okay.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Just real quick, I'm assuming that we have dealt with the property owners and such in the area, and there is a positive outcome for this on their end? People that own the different things, is it going to benefit them?
The-
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I thought, that's, that's, that's what I, I'm just double checking, we have, just trying to get somebody, recognition out there, okay, good. That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, we'll have an opportunity to comment later. At this time, I would like to open up the hearing for anyone in this council chamber wishing to be heard on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one speaker, Doug Felbinger.
Cochrane Street. I appreciate this, I think that it's great, it'll be a lot easier to explain to people what AI zone is, you know, it's just an expansion of the LI zone. And I've, I talked to, to the Planning Commission about it, and I think that some of the uses have changed, the, the use grid changed, and that in this version, we've got a couple of uses that were, it didn't make it the same across LI and AI. So we're talking about number 7997 and 7999. They're, they're conditional use permit in LI, and they aren't allowed in AI. Other than that, great job. Brian and I have had to deal with the AI zone for 30 years, so, thank you.
Does staff have any comments on that?
No, that was the only speaker.
Yeah, yeah, just one.
Yes, we're pulling up, we're pulling up the, Ms. Felbinger's item.
7997 and 7999.
Yes.
So we were talking about-
So we were talking about, um, adding in the AI zone, the ability to have memberships, sports and recreation clubs. That's seven nine nine seven. And seven nine 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 is shooting ranges.
Actually, they had gun, you're right, they have.
Gun clubs and shooting ranges.
Yeah, seven nine nine seven is gun clubs as well.
So staff doesn't have a, um, concern with adding those in as a conditional use permit?
All right. So at this time, the hearing's closed. Any comments from council, please? Uh, Councilmember Litzler.
Thank you. So I, I do appreciate the effort and time that has gone into this, Sean, and the years of aggravation to bring it to this point. Um, I will tell you, I was intrigued as I was reading the whole report, I noticed, actually, I was actually impressed with this, with the detail and specificity of the original West End report and what was, in 19, I think it was 99, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, when it was put into effect. And I noticed in the report that at the time, I'll be honest, that, uh, who the planning commissioners were, and at the time, I believe, the chair was maybe even Dean Koenke, and so I was curious to feel, to reach out and find out their reaction to this change, knowing that a lot of effort must have been put in 20 years ago to make this. And so I, I just wanted to share, actually, that, because I was impressed with what I was reading, but I wanted to, was curious to see what a previous planning commissioner would feel about these changes. And so I just thought I would share this. And he texted, "With the growth of the community and the lack of local jobs, this is probably long overdue. Years ago, it was thought having this district would stimulate jobs into a specific area. It had some success, but not as visioned. Time for change, something that more reflects current economic and community conditions. I would support the change if I were voting on it." So anyway, I just thought it would be interesting just, just to share that comment, um, from someone who was part of the creation of it way back when. But, um, wanted to thank you for your efforts, and I do see it as a positive, um, addition or positive change to make things a little more conforming and more, uh, accessible to our business community. I would make the motion, but if anyone else wants to speak, I don't want to stop that.
Yeah, so I don't see anything else, and I haven't heard any opposition yet, so I will now entertain a motion.
I move to introduce ordinance number 1354, amending the West End specific plan SP dash S dash 2023 dash zero 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 one, and determine that the amendments are exempt from additional environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental, can't even talk tonight, Environmental Quality Act under the common sense exception within the CEQA guidelines.
I'll second that.
Call for a vote.
And does that include the minor amendment?
With the minor.
With the minor amendment.
I'll second that with the minor amendment.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item seven, the consent calendar, and there are four resolutions for your consideration this evening. Consent item three, resolution number 2023 dash 47, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley, authorizing entering into a contract with Benefit Financial Services Group LLC for deferred compensation investment services. Consent item four, resolution number 2023 dash 48, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley, establishing the city council meeting schedule for the calendar year of 2024. Consent item five, resolution number 2023 dash 49, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley, accepting the public improvements for tract number 6024, located at 3039 East Cochran Street. And consent item seven, resolution number 2023 dash 50, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley, authorizing the execution and filing of a claim with the Ventura County Transportation Commission, VCTC, for allocation of Transportation Development Act funds for fiscal year 2023-24.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item nine A, review and discussion of community projects grant, grant eligibility criteria, and environmental services director Maam Mouch is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, members of the city council. On May 9th, 2011, the city council approved executing a memorandum of understanding between the city and waste management related to the expansion of the Simi Valley landfill and recycling center. That executed MOU provides annual funding up to 150,000 for community projects and programs at the discretion of the city council. After awarding funds directly to organizations for the first three years, the city council established eligibility criteria in December 2014 and directed staff to conduct a competitive process to award funds for the fiscal year 2015, for fiscal year 2015-16. During the awarding of the fiscal year 2016-17 funds, the city council, city council members requested a future discussion of the program. On February 27th, 2017, the city council incorporated community feedback to develop the current eligibility criteria. At the last city council meeting, another discussion of the eligibility criteria was requested. Currently, organizations must demonstrate that a project or program is of direct benefit to Simi Valley residents, and each organization does so as follows. Nonprofit organizations need to include a satellite location, if not located in the city of Simi Valley, here in the city. Fifty percent of the individuals served by the organization are Simi Valley residents. Demonstrate that 100% of the people served through the community projects grant monies are Simi Valley residents, or the organization itself is located in the city of Simi Valley. To date, all awardees have provided services either at their primary location or at a satellite location, such as a school site located here within the city. At this time, staff is requesting direction on potential changes to the community projects
Mayor, I have a question, if you're.
Yeah. Councilmember Litzler.
Thank you. Uh, and I, um, just a question, I just want to clarify. You've given these guidelines, requirements, um, and you just, that 50% of the individual, am I correct, as I read the report, that they need to conform to one of those guidelines, not all of them, correct?
The, the guidelines regarding location and where services are provided.
Exactly. So they have to meet at least one of those.
Correct.
Very good. Um, I was trying, as I was reading the report, and it was, actually, it was very informative, and I appreciate the history, and it was, it was just very well prepared, so I appreciate that. I don't recall the reason that, was there a specific concern of the body of this, of the city council, um, or was this just a general review? I, that's, I don't, didn't remember.
A little bit of both. It was requested a couple of meetings back to bring back the, um, criteria, just to, for the council to review and update, um, if necessary.
Got it. Okay. Well, thank you. So I appreciate that clarification.
Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm looking at that 50% of individuals served in the organization are Simi Valley residents or demonstrate that. I would like that 50% thing gone and just make sure that 100% of the money stays to people here in Simi Valley and projects in Simi Valley.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Are those contradictory bullet points, or are we just not reading them?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying.
So just, just to clarify, the 50% of individuals served by the organization is if the organization physically resides outside of the city and is providing services outside of the city. However, all grant funding awarded must serve Simi Valley residents.
Oh.
It just enables an organization that's not located in city to apply for funds that may be providing regional services.
Okay. So it's not 50% of the money, it's 50% of the individuals. This is a little confusing the way it's written. So satellite locations being within Simi Valley, yes, or 50% of the individuals served by the organization are Simi Valley residents. So that would be if they don't have an office here in Simi. For example, let's use senior concerns. They do, I think, have a space in the senior center. But they're technically out of Thousand Oaks.
Correct.
But that, when we give them a grant, 100% of the grant we give them is being used for Simi Valley residents, correct?
Correct.
That's what I thought. Okay. I think that's what we wanted to clarify.
But it would allow an organization such as Senior Concerns that didn't have a satellite location to be eligible to even apply because they're already serving a significant portion of their clientele from Simi Valley.
But the money we give them would have to be used for.
Yes.
Simi Valley residents only. I think that's what we wanted to clarify, right?
So, one of the questions, as I recall, is that sometimes we have applicants that they serve all Simi Valley residents, but maybe it's 10 people versus another organization that benefits hundreds of Simi Valley residents. Do we, I'm just throwing it out there, do we want to give preferential consideration to, um, those grants that benefit a larger number of people, or does that matter to us?
I think that's what we allow the committee to determine.
Okay.
This is the one where we allow the committee to make the decision.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we do currently, on the application for funding, um, we do require organizations to say how many households or individuals are anticipated to be served by the project so that that information is presented upfront to the committee and the council through the applications. So it can be taken into consideration, it's just not a.
They can choose to or not.
Eligibility criteria that precludes them from advancing in the process.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah, and I would probably stay away from that, uh, just as a requirement level, because if it's one habitat for humanity, which builds a house for.
Oh, agreed.
That's a worthy cause.
Not as a requirement, just wondered, we wanted to give guidance or encouragement, but that's all. But it, but it, it sounds like it's, the fact that it's listed, the information's provided, it, it can be used if they desire. My sense is that it's.
Receive and file.
It's very good. It's a good report, you're doing it right, and I, I personally don't have anything I want to change, but.
I, I appreciate the clarification for all of us. On explaining exactly how it works, because I think that's where some of our concerns were.
And just to reassure council, that staff does these screenings prior to advancing the applications onto the committee. So we're also verifying that they have a business tax certificate and they're in good 501(c)(3) standing. So we are doing preliminary screenings, and then we'll work with the organizations as needed as the applications are received to clarify anything, to try to maximize participation, but we do make sure that they're meeting all of the criteria and explain and work with them on that.
Having been on the other side of this many years ago, I know that staff is very thorough on the screening of the, and then also with the follow-up and how the money is spent and then all the reporting's done, uh, do a really thorough, complete job, so, well done.
And I must say, the report was very fun to read, the variety of grant recipients and the causes that have been supported. I think this body is to be commended for all of the many various events or various groups that have been supported. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Receive and file. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item nine B, consideration of contract with Burke, Williams and Sorensen for city attorney and legal counsel services, and city manager Gabler is presenting this item.
Thank you. Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, on, in September, our city attorney, David Cusier, has notified us that they were retiring from the city of Simi Valley. As a result, the city reached out to Burke, Williams and Sorensen, um, for contract city attorney services. That work has, um, that work started the day after the separation occurred. In October, the city council voted 5-0 to formally appoint Algerio Ford as the attorney, city, city's city attorney. Uh, Mr. Ford is an attorney with Burke and has represented the city as a city attorney since that date. Burke has a long history of providing services to cities, um, for city attorney services, um, and to date, it has worked out very well for the city of Simi Valley. One of the three formats that municipal governments work with the city attorney, um, is a, either, one is a contract city attorney where all the services are provided, uh, by the outside legal counsel, and the city has no legal staff. The other is an in-house city attorney, uh, process where all legal services are performed in-house. However, the specialized legal services, um, may be contracted out to outside counsel, and then a hybrid city attorney format, which is what we currently have now, where we, the city would have certain staff attorneys performing legal services that align with their expertise. However, the provision of, of city attorney, the services of a city attorney and other legal services would be contracted out. So, yeah, in the interim, we have been working off three different, uh, smaller contracts, one for legal services, one for litigation services, and one for land use services with Burke, Williams, Sorensen. At this time, we're looking to, um, have one, a, a contract that encompasses all the legal services that are available to the city, and would recommend that the city council approve the contract with, uh, Burke, Williams, Sorensen for the provision of legal services, city attorney services and legal counsel services. And I'll make myself available for any questions.
Councilmember Litzler.
Thank you, Mayor. I asked some of these questions earlier of city manager Brian Gabler, but I'd like it, uh, to ask them again for, just for discussion's sake, because I want to be very transparent and very clear. First of all, and actually, I didn't ask you this question, I'm just kind of curious, how many attorneys are directly employed by Burke, Williams and Sorensen?
I don't know. I think we have, it shifts.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I realize, I'm sorry, I should have asked you that earlier, I should have put you on the spot.
No worries. I think we have over 130 attorneys right now.
Okay. And, and the report suggested that they serve the needs of over 300 municipal entities, which is quite impressive. One of the questions I had is, how do we make sure that Simi Valley is prioritized? Now, we have you, which is great, but how do we, with so many entities being serviced, how do we make sure that, that we're being prioritized, I guess?
I, I think you answered it with, with partly, the first statement, is that you have a dedicated city attorney. Um, and as part of that, I've got dedicated staff who, um, assist me with providing services to Simi. Um, one of those is in the audience, Ms. Stephanie Gutierrez, who, um, we've discussed before, would be able to cover city council meetings and also interact with city council when things come up. Um, we've got a dedicated person who has been overseeing all the land use issues, who has different staff from our firm working with, with him. We've got a person that's specific that works with litigation issues, and at the same time, uh, we've been coordinating all of these services also, both with your city staff, as well as with the city attorneys that are already, um, at the office. So the senior and also deputy city attorneys.
Excellent. And I, I just had one final question, and, and this is one, it seems like with every contract that we have made for whatever, for paving or for whatever, there has always been a cap, or, um, uh, you know, we will pay X amount, or there's been, you know, and as I read through the contract, I don't see that that is in this contract, um, much as, I, I just am a little concerned about an open checkbook that is, that is, and so I just want, I would love to hear a response to that. Maybe I misread the contract, or maybe you could give me some assurance.
That's accurate, and, and I can tell you, that's not unusual. I, I would, I would imagine if you looked at most city attorney contracts, this is different from, um, what I would phrase as special legal services, right? Where it's a one-off sort of project, where you want to have the ability to put a cap and have it come back. Um, as city attorney, we're going to be covering almost all the services for the city. We're going to be covering litigation, we're going to be covering, um, general council meetings, we're going to be covering advice and counsel, potentially labor negotiations if that's what you want. You have the ability to absolutely set a cap, uh, it's, it's just different from what I would look at, is your, your sort of regular contracts that, that are for particular projects and only last for a particular amount of time.
Thank you. And I, obviously, we can be evaluated over time. I mean, obviously, we see how much we're spending and, and, and compared to historical expenses and what we're, et cetera, so I, okay.
Absolutely.
Just trying to understand.
And I do want to note in, on the, on the financial side of it, is that it, we can only approve, we can only spend what's in the budget, and so, um, we're not anticipating exceeding the budget at all. In fact, we believe we're going to save money in the long run. But each year, i- i- in a, in a somewhat of a semi-financial review, you would review the city attorney services in the, in the budget document as well.
Understood. Thank you.
Mayor Protim Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just sort of tagging on to the contractual thing, the other thing that gives me, um, comfort, as we're, we are in the, in the initial phases of this relationship, uh, and so far, awesome, uh, but in that contract is a get out whenever you want clause, and that, that, that stops the cap.
For both sides, for that matter. For both sides, for that matter. I just want to make that very clear.
So I'm looking forward to seeing the, the fruits of the relationship.
Would you like a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I move to approve the contract with Burke, Williams, and Sorensen for the provision of city attorney and legal counsel services.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 10A, City Council Member Reports.
Councilmember Litzter, please.
Oh, great, now I have to pull it up in time. Now, doesn't it actually become effective January 1st, or is it effective immediately? Is that?
It was by error, then. Oh, thank goodness.
So, councilmember or Mayor Protem Rhodes, I'm not sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Meetings this, since the last council meeting, on Wednesday, November 15th, I went more as a private resident, but I attended the Park District Meeting as they are wrestling with the districting that they're going to be going through, and I gave my input of the experience of having run in districts as a city council member, but then also as a concerned citizen. It was a really well-informed meeting and well-run. On Thursday, November 16th, I attained, I attended the Bridle Path Homeowners Association, not just because it happens to be my homeowners' association, but there's an issue in their mountain park with gates being, and fences being destroyed, and we're looking to coordinate some effort between police department and some remote cameras up there to see if we can stop mountain bikers breaking into our mountain park. And I wanted to give an update to the HOA on that. On... Oh, on Saturday, November 18th, had the pleasure of attending the Simi Valley Town Center tree lighting, and I want to thank the staff up there at the Town Center for putting on an amazing event, and the dance studios that provided the entertainment. I felt sorry for them, there was some rain, and there are some dance routines that start with laying on the stage. And that was a, well, yeah, but they did it, and they, they had great spirit and heart, and the, all the entertainment was amazing, and the tree is beautiful. And so, thank you to the mall for bringing back that wonderful event. Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I did a few days in Vermont for a continuing education thing for my business, and Saturday, December 2nd, a very full day. I started at the Target over on Sycamore, where the Rotary Club, the Morning Rotary Club, with sponsorship by others, was able to put on a shopping event where, I believe the number was 40 of our high school seniors, at least high schoolers, that were in some need, were given $250 shopping cards for Target and a personal shopper to go with them and help them find goods, and they can choose whatever they want. And it was, it's intended that they shop for themselves, and in many carts, because I just wandered and, and just looked in carts, getting shopping ideas for myself, and there were cleaning supplies, and toiletries, and socks, and underwear, and gifts for siblings, and, and then the occasional noise-canceling gaming headsets. So, those seem to be very, very popular, so. But that was a great event, and well put on and well servicing the, the community by the Rotary Club, so thank you for that. I attended the Touch a Truck event, and was, was thrilled to see the turnout from the community at that event. I know others will talk about it, so I won't spend a lot of time on it, but I was, I was, I had an emergency phone call, which kept me from going to Simi High School to send off the team, and that made me very sad. And I was at the Touch a Truck event, and they said, "They're coming by here." I'm like, "Okay," now I'm very happy. And a bunch of us stood on the street and cheered the, the buses and the, the parade that went by sending off our team. In the afternoon, I attended the LA Kings Isoplex Ice Arena rebranding, which was very interesting to see, that the, the commitment that the Kings have to the area, and the, the reception by how many people turned out for that. There's a lot of people that love to play on the ice, and they really support that venue, and that venue's been great for Simi, so congratulations on the rebranding. And that is the end of my report.
Councilmember Litzter.
Thank you. Appreciate your report. Let me start with, actually, with Thursday, November the 16th. I had an administrative committee meeting with, with V-COG, and we are planning the next year with Ventura County Association of Government, and the good things are going forward with that. On Saturday, November 18th, I too attended the Simi Town Center tree lighting, wanted to thank Mr. Jeff DeJulius for putting together a nice event for everyone. It was fun, the several days previous, I saw them actually lighting the tree with a big claw, and it's amazing what a production that is to get it decorated. And I too appreciated the wet performances, but I wanted to thank the performers, in fact, I was there towards the end, and Moore Parks College, jazz been out there playing with their instruments in the rain. And I thought, you know, that is dedication to craft and willingness to, to support, and I appreciated it. And they have it snowing up there again, so it's very fun to see the, the scheduled snow, so don't miss that. Monday, November 20th, I did my civic duty, and I had, went, I had jury duty. I want you to know that I went to Ventura County, and I sat and was ready to go sit on trial, and they didn't call any of us up, but I was ready. I will tell you, for those of you who are, are called up for jury duty, they've streamlined it now, and now it's a half a day commitment. It's not a sit-all-day thing. You come at 1:00, or you come in the mornings. So, anyway, it was good to do my civic duty. On Tuesday, November 20th, actually, I knew going that week of Thanksgiving likely was going to be a light calendar, but that's when they scheduled me. I didn't try to do it purposely, I just want to be very clear. Tuesday, November 21st, attended the interfaith gathering, and I appreciate the interfaith effort here in our community. There were quite a handful of different congregations gathering together with messages that were read of things they were grateful for and thankfulness, and wanted to thank Mayor Protem Mike Judge's opening remarks there as well. Actually, I had the fun of playing the harp while they had a collection for the Samaritan Center. And I did say to them, "The advantage of a live musician is I can go as long as you keep dropping money." And so, there were some generous people, let me just say that. So, I, I appreciated, appreciated, appreciated the Samaritan Center and the efforts of all those that were there. Thanksgiving was lovely. Back to work on Thursday, November the 30th, I attended Clue at Royal High School, the production performance. Bravo, well done, that beautiful new theater, just some good actors and actresses, very entertaining. And so, I commend Ms. Susie Jeffords, who is their drama teach coach, just some great actors there at Royal High School. I know Brian has his allegiance to Santa Su's drama program, but just want him to know that other great drama things are happening around the, around the city. On December the 1st, I am a member of SoCal Edison's GAP Committee's Government Advisory Panel, and so it was interesting to attend the regional meeting about what Southern California Edison is up to, and I appreciate the conversation I had with Mr. Gable beforehand, so I could ask publicly the questions about the PSPS events and, and hear their responses. I should say that Jill Anderson, who is the Executive VP of Operations, was the presenter, and, and one of the things that she shared is that this year was great because they've only had four PSPS events in their entire system. I thought, "Great, and they're all in our area." So, I, I brought that to their attention, and, and it mentioned that we needed updated mapping on the, on, on, on the cir... The circuses have been segmented. He tells me, "Oh, that's all on the website, we need to show you how to use it." And I said, "Well, you come, call the city," I said. And there were others that, that, that I first initially made that question in the chat, and they were seconding my question. So clearly, there are others who have the same question. So, they're, they're aware of it, and they will be, they will be hopefully providing that updated mapping, or how it is going to be made clear. The other thing they shared too, and Brian asked about, there's been talk of providing more covered conduits, or, am I saying the right thing? That, covered conductors, thank you, I used the right word at the time. What she mentioned is that they're, they intend to have everything done within two more years, as far as all the conductors they plan to cover. Now, that doesn't mean they're, they're not covering everything planned, that, that she used the word "planned." And so, I did ask, "Well, tell us how, what, what's, what does that look like for our West End?" So hopefully, we'll know that that will get done within the next year, two at the most. She gave some interesting statistics that I will share with you, but that also I will, I would tell, would say also provides me pause and concern. They are projecting basically an 80% growth in their operations, that 90% of cars will be electric by 2045, 95% of buildings will be all-electric, et cetera. That's their projections. Of course, the question is asked about what does that mean for cost for consumers, how are they providing all this electricity, et cetera, et cetera. And I direct quote from her, "Electric costs will go up, but total energy costs for households will go down." In other words, you pay this much for gas, you pay this much for heating, et cetera, so you're going to pay a lot more for electric, but overall, it should be, you're going to lose less. Anyway, so that's, that is what they're sharing. What concerns me, and I've shared this with others, is that right now, we have options when we need to purchase energy, et cetera. They will be holding a monopoly, basically, and that will be the only place you can get your electricity. And that, as a, with an economics background, is, is just very concerning for me, but I, I editorialize, that was not part of the presentation, just sharing you my, sharing my thoughts. Anyway, there was a discussion about solar, 12% to 13% of residential customers have solar now, they expect that to be about 50% in 2045, but, of course, some of the incentives, et cetera, will all be changing as more and more come online. Anyway, be happy to share. Oh, the one other thing I thought was interesting too, they have been doing an analysis of car hit pole analysis of the area. In other words, that's what they call it, car hit pole. Basically, basically, it's, it's when power outages that are caused by cars that are hitting, hitting electric poles. And they realized that there were, in some instances, multiple occurrences, and that they needed to look at that. And so, that is one of the things they've been doing, is actually tracking the frequency at which certain poles have been hit repeatedly. And that when they've identified those poles, they're now looking that they've, using that data, either moved the pole, maybe put up a barrier, et cetera. And I don't know that we have that frequently in Simi Valley, but there, I have noticed a couple, maybe one place where I think, I, I just thought to, I made a mental note, if we have anything that we see frequently happening, they're saying they're going to move the pole. So, I, I share that with you, Chief. If you find there's a pole that's getting hit a lot, please let us know, because SE is now telling us that they're going to move it and make it easier for, for drunk drivers, I guess, I, but anyway. So, so I just wanted, wanted to share that as well. Okay, going back to, back to, that was December 1st. December 2nd, I will tell you, I, I, I did attend that send-off for Simi High School football team. And I just have to say, having had sons who played for, for Simi Valley football, Simi High football, congratulations. I mean, you probably saw the front-page article, but they won their first CIF football title in 103 years of school existence, and hopefully they're going to be here to get awards, et cetera. I hope that's scheduled. But it was quite a fun send-off with, with all of their buses, chartered buses, they were headed up to Visalia for the game, and so I was there to, to shake a pom-pom and yell and get excited for them. And, and I didn't have the forethought that, that our supervisor, Janice Parvin, who, who showed up in a hot, in Jennifer Swenson's hot blue Corvette, and, and joined, I, so, I was invited to join and go right behind her car, and I said, "There is no way my, my little junker is going behind there." But I will say that after the buses pulled out of the parking lot, I had to leave anyway, and I was headed to Touch a Truck, and, and they were going that way, so I did kind of end up in there. And I, in fact, I did put my flashers on, and I was honking like, it was, it was very fun to, to, to be part of that procession. And I just have to say, congratulations. I understand, I know that it wasn't the victory that they hoped for up in Visalia, but it was, they represented well. It was still a hard-fought battle, I think 38 to 55, if I'm not mistaken, but, but just, congratulations, gentlemen, well, well done. Also, on December 2nd, I played and attended the Simi Valley Community Christmas Event, which has gone on now, they, for three nights, and just beautifully done. Again, congregations from all over were performing, and the schools were performing there. And Sunday, I attended the Strathen Historical Society's Holiday Gathering, which was beautifully done. And they had performances there in their, their garage, or, not garage, what is that there? The barn, I'm sorry, I don't call it a garage, but they have cars in it, the barn. Anyway, but Santa Claus was there, seeing the chapel for pictures, and anyway, just, I just want to commend Santa, Santa Susanna Park System for what, for that lovely gathering that was free to the public. Going back to Touch a Truck, I confess, yes, I honked my horn and drove by, but I had to go elsewhere, and so I didn't actually, but I sent my granddaughter and my husband there. They had so much fun, he finally, he had to get somewhere, and he gets, "I'll be there in a minute," but when I told them that there was a cement mixer that they could look at, I mean, just, it was, she just had a fabulous time. So thank you, thank you for all that made that such a great event. I conclude by saying happy Hanukkah to our Jewish friends, this December 7th, this Thursday is when the first night of Hanukkah to celebrate. So, anyway, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Kavala.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, November 16th, I had my EDC Economic Development Collaborative, my final full board member as, or, board meeting as chairperson. So, it was a bittersweet, but yay-hoo, I don't have to chair anymore, kind of meeting. I have one executive board meeting left to Wednesday, and, and that's it. And then our next meeting will be our annual dinner in January, where we will seat our new chair, who will be Kristin DeKes from the Port of Huonimi. Very excited about that, I keep telling her over and over, "I want a port in Simi Valley," but it hasn't worked out yet. I think that Arroyo would make a good, yeah, right, right through there. They do such fun things at the port, it would be, really be nice. The rest of the, the next week, I really spent a lot of time with family, and I hope everyone had a, a nice Thanksgiving. I had the opportunity to go up to Kachuma for two days, spend the night with my daughter while she was camping, so that was kind of fun. Hadn't done that in a long time, and the grandsons, it's a lot of dirt though, so I was happy to come home. So, you know, I, I'm a little bit more glamping type than camping, so, but it was a good time. And, and a lot of people in Simi Valley were actually there, a lot of the Simi Valley Elks, their camping club, was there. So that was very nice. I don't know, a lot of you know that I'm in banking, so I've learned some new words this year in banking. So, in March and April, we heard the, we discovered a new word called contagion, and that was, that was when the banks were, a few banks failed due to the venture banking area, and so that was the new word for that time, was contagion. Well, this past week, last week, I learned another new word in regards to banking, transformational merger. So, my bank and another bank did a transformational merger last week. So I now have a new employer, but everyone's still the same, so it, it'll work out really great. So, I just decided to share those two new words with people, I, I thought that was unique. They come up with these things. But I am happy that I have a new, I have a job still, the same job, actually, so. Oh, I did want to remind people that January 12th will be the Simi Valley Police Foundation's Recognition Dinner for our Simi Valley police officers. There are seats available, it will be at the Ronald Reagan Presidential Library. I bought the canine table, because it's supposed to be the most fun. So I'm sponsoring that one, so I think that'll be a lot of fun. The mayor, there's a mayor's table, there's a chief's table, I think there's an assistant chief's table? They didn't give you one, Brian, sorry. But for, for anyone that wants to help support our police department, you know, feel free to go onto svpf.org and, and see if you can attend that event, it should be a lot of fun. I wanted to say, oh, on December 2nd, I also attended the Touch a Truck toy drive. Unfortunately, my two grandsons wanted to go to Disneyland instead, so I had to go by myself, but I took by myself, but I took, took presents, I bought them for Christmas and donated them. I buy, I keep buying them too many toys. So I'm like, "Okay, I can take a couple of these toys and, and do the donation." Fire Department's collecting them. They look like they were doing a great job of that. Touch a Truck is always a lot of fun. I didn't see your husband, I probably had already left by the time, but it was a great, great event. But I did have the pleasure of meeting our new second motor officer. They were very excited to be there. Both of them were there. I told them what my car looked like, so they won't pull me over. I don't think that'll work, but you know, you never know. But it was very exciting to see them both there and the community was really happy to hear that we're having our motor unit returned. So, so thank you to both of them. And I think I also wanted to say happy Hanukkah to those celebrating this coming week. So that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember or Mayor Protem Judge, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, excuse me, on Saturday, November 18th, I too attended the Simi Valley Town Center's tree lighting. And I want to say that it's always, always one of my favorite events and, and the town center's staff didn't let me down this year. It was a great event, even though it was a little rainy, it was still nice. There were lots of people there, more than I think I've seen in a couple of years. So that was great. On Tuesday, November 21st, I had to attend the ad hoc committee meeting for the Santa Barbara, Santa Paula Branch Line Railroad through VCTC. I'll have more talk about that later, but we had a couple of meetings for that because that was causing people that live in Santa Paula and Fillmore area, there's a lot of angst where the, because of the bridge being down, the tracks are consumed with railcar storage and that was causing a lot of problems over there. But we did get it fixed. On Wednesday, November 22nd, I got over to the senior center and was able to carve up about seven turkeys before I had to leave. We had the Thanksgiving dinner that night for all the seniors. We have three different shifts that run and boy, we had a lot of turkeys to carve. It was great. Always a great event and I know everybody that's involved with it is, is a volunteer. They volunteer a lot of time with that and I appreciate that and the seniors do too. Thank you very much for doing that. I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving on Thursday, November 23rd. And on Tuesday, November 28th, I had another meeting for the ISP, Sierra Northern, or the Santa Paula Branch Line Ad Hoc Committee. On Thursday, on Friday, December 1st, we had a VCTC meeting. Now, all of those branch line meetings came down to the fact that we did get an agreement worked out where we were amending the contract with the branch line, mostly regarding the railroad car storage in those areas. We got that fixed and hopefully that'll make those people a lot more comfortable. And the good thing is they're going to get those cars moved before the end of the year. So that was a big deal. December 2nd, I too attended the Touch a Truck. I was there as part of the Police Foundation and also as part of the Elks Lodge because we had an Elks tent there, giving out information about our Elks and whistles to the kids to go along with all the horns. It was great. Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas to all the parents that got those whistles. Later, the Simi Valley Football Team, I was going to go see them off at the high school, but since they were driving by, I just got on the sidewalk with everybody else and cheered them on. That was an outstanding effort by them and I'm so glad they made it as far as they did and we got to have them at the city council meeting as soon as we can. On later that day, I also attended the LA Kings Isoplex rebranding. I was happy to see that happen and I'm, I just think that's a great thing for our city and hopefully much more good things will come from that. And that's about the end of my report.
Forgot something real quick. I'm sorry. I forgot to say that I actually said go pioneers and cheered them on as they drove by. That was hard. I'm a Highlander. But I also, I did post the video of you guys standing there and us cheering them as they went by. So great job, Simi Valley High School and great job for your alma mater, Mike.
I also wanted to say happy Hanukkah to everybody out there and I know that starts next week and looking forward to the first candle and donuts.
I'm going to make this quick, get this wrapped up. On Thursday, the 16th, I attended a C-level visit along with the Chamber of Commerce with one of their businesses in town. Had a long discussion about what they do, what challenges they have and what the city can do to assist them. Saturday, the 18th, attended the tree lighting at Simi Valley Town Center. It was great to see such a, a large gathering of community members, you know, community, you know, spirit like that. Great event. Let's see here. Thanksgiving. Let's see. On Thursday, November 30th, Simi Valley Tourism Committee. It's been a frustrating thing for me, dealing with the tourism committee and trying to get from where they were to where they need to be. And I can tell you, we've finally gotten to the point that I've, I've been trying to get to and I'll have some great news to share in, in the new year. Let's see here. Saturday, December 2nd, started the day with the Touch a Truck event put on by the Simi Valley Police Foundation, tied in with the Fire Department's Toy Drive. Great event, great turnout, lots of people. And I loved the fact that the Simi Valley Football Team came by with their police escort and got a chance to cheer them on. I thought that was really exciting. I left there in time to go and take part in an Eagle Court of Honor for, for Simi Valley now Eagle Scouts. It was a, the longest court I've ever attended. I was really involved, but it was, it was a really great thing and it's especially meaningful to me since I'm an Eagle Scout. Left there just in time to get up to the Isoplex and the rebranding is the LA Kings Isoplex. I can tell you that, you know, the Kings' involvement in youth hockey here in Simi Valley isn't new, but this branding is new. And I think it's a, you know, an expanded commitment on their part to, to take an even larger role in supporting youth hockey in Southern California and specifically here in Simi Valley. And I think that that is something that's going to continue to grow here. That's all I have to report. Do I have any future agenda items? Seeing none. And I will adjourn this meeting in the memory of William James Gilmore, Simi Valley resident and Supreme Court Associate Justice Sandra Day O'Connor. Thank you, everybody. Oh, and happy Hanukkah to all those celebrating this coming week. Thank you for being here. Have a nice evening.